Everybody, it is 5:30, time to begin the December meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Before we get started, I want to recognize a couple of our commissioners who are leaving the Commission tonight. First, Mary Beach McGuire, who has been on the Board since 2021, and she's moving to the Board of Adjustments. So, traitor, no.
(laughing).
We'll miss you. We'll miss your wisdom. And then Justin Allison, who has been on since 2014. I counted it, it's 10 years that Justin has dedicated to being here. And he has, I think, rarely missed a meeting. He has really just put in hours and hours and hours on behalf of this city. So, to the two of you, thank you. Let's give him a round of applause. He will be missed. And I will pass these on down to them. All right, the first item on our agenda is to consider the approval of the November 15 minutes. Commissioners?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the November 2023 minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Next up, consider approval of December 4, 2023 minutes?
So moved.
All those in favor of approving the December 2023 minutes, say aye?
Aye.
All right, moving on to the public hearings. Case number AS 2023-002, abandonment of a portion of St. Felix Street from West Turner Street to West Harleton Street of the Grossbeck and McCleland subdivision of the City of Steenville. Whoops, yeah, that's it.
That's it.
That's it.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, we actually have six different street abandonments to consider tonight. Each one will have to be acted on separately. My comments are going to be very similar for each one, so I'll go over this one pretty thoroughly, and then the remaining ones, I'll just mention what the city departments had mentioned needing if we do agree to the abandonment. So, as you may recall, we've considered several abandonments for the Harleton expansion. Basically, when they acquire property, they have to acquire property that completely surrounds the street before we'll consider the abandonment. They have done that, and this is for, obviously, a future expansion of the campus. So, we have six portions of different streets to consider. Chapter 95 authorizes the city to abandon streets, or alleys, or easements, and it authorizes the council to initiate action to abandon those streets. The city council did initiate action for each of these six streets that we'll be reviewing tonight that occurred on November 7. They passed resolutions, and through those resolutions, it continues over to the Planning and Zoning Commission for your review and recommendation back to the city council to either proceed with the abandonment or to not proceed with the abandonment. So, with that, this is for, as Commissioner, as, I'm sorry, the Chairman mentioned, St. Felix from West Turner Street to West Harleton Street. We mentioned the enabling ordinance that allows us to do this. We did check with our Public Service Departments, Development Services Department, obviously, and our Public Works Department. The only department that provided feedback that would have any bearing on the abandonment was Public Works. And for this particular property, or this particular street, Public Works stated that we would need to retain a 15-foot municipal utility easement for water and sewer mains. And then, the final easement dimensions would be identified with the survey once we got to the point of actually selling the property. One last point I want to make is this is not necessarily the city moving forward with the sale of the property, it's just authorizing the city to abandon the property. In simple terms, as Harleton acquires these properties and that becomes part of their campus, maintaining the streets is basically a liability for the city, and we can transfer that over to the campus as private responsibility. And so, we'd like to be glad to answer any questions related to this particular street. Thank you, ma'am.
Questions for Steve?
Is it normal practice for us to retain, if the water line only serves Harleton, for us to maintain and retain easement for what's basically a private service line at that point?
That's a great question, one that we actually discussed today. If we abandon the street and the Public Works Department determines that we no longer need that water line to loop our system or maintain our system, then we will abandon that line as well and just turn it over to private maintenance to the university.
The house there on the corner, it looks like the driveway exits onto that street that's going to be closed. Is that going to be an issue?
No, sir. That, I understand that's going to be demolished once this deal occurs.
Okay, because it wasn't shown that they owned it yet?
Mm-hmm.
Has it been acquired by Harleton?
I believe that's in process.
Okay. When the motion is made, does it need to include the specific thing, the comments regarding Public Works, or does it matter that we continuously?
I mean, I think on the motion, if we make reference to as presented.
Okay.
That way, we would have it documented in our action that we did discuss those easements during the meeting.
Okay. Other questions for Steve? All right, I'll go ahead and open a public hearing. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak in favor or against this abandonment? I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, we need a motion to discuss.
I move that we approve with the conditions as set forth, or recommend approval of the street abandonment with the conditions set forth.
Second.
No discussion? All right, all those in favor of recommending to council abandonment of the portion of St. Felix Street as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Justin is the nay. Okay. So, that moves forward with a positive recommendation to council. Case number AS 2023-003, abandonment of a portion of St. Peter Street from West Washington Street to West Harleton Street on the Grossbeck and McCleland subdivision of the City of Steenville. Mr. Kellen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, same comments with the exception of the easements that would be needed. Retain the 30-foot wide municipal easement from Washington to St. Peter for a 14-inch water main and a 6-inch water transmission line, abandon a 3/4-inch water distribution line and a 6-inch sanitary sewer line, and the final easement dimensions to be identified by survey. And again, as we get into this, if the city determines that we need those lines, then that's when we would retain the easement. We may not have to take that action if we determine that it's just as beneficial to abandon that or turn it over to private maintenance.
Questions for Steve?
How would the fire department be able to get into this area after this street's abandoned with all the parking and large buildings that are there?
So, great question. Again, we did solicit input from Public Services, or I'm sorry, Public Works, and our Public Safety Departments, and the fire department did not provide any objections, so that leads me to believe they feel they have adequate access with the equipment and apparatus that they have available.
All right, I'll go ahead and open a public hearing. Does anybody here wish to speak in favor or against this abandonment request? Close the public hearing. Commissioners?
Make a motion to recommend approval of case AS 2022-003 as presented.
Second. All those in favor of recommending to council abandonment of the St. Peter Street portion as presented, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Justin? Case number AS 2023-004, abandonment of a portion of Jones Street from North Kane Street to North Lillian Street of the College Heights Division of the City of Steenville. Mr. Kellen.
Public Works comments, retain easement of a 15-foot wide municipal utility easement for a 6-inch water line to keep the system looped, abandon an 8-inch sanitary sewer line, and then obtain the final easement dimensions through the survey.
I'll go ahead and open a public hearing. Anybody here wish to speak in favor or against this abandonment? Closing the public hearing. Commissioners?
Oh, I'm, we're on the, I moved that AS 2022-004, is it four? Be, I moved that recommended to council for approval as presented.
Second.
All those in favor of recommending to council abandonment of a portion of Jones Street as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Yep. Case number AS 2023-005, abandonment of a portion of Kane Street from West Jones Street to West Vanderbilt Street of the city, I'm sorry, of the College Heights subdivision of the City of Steenville.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Public Works Department indicated we would need to retain a 15-foot wide municipal easement for a 6-inch water line to keep the system looped, abandon the 6-inch sanitary sewer line, and obtain the final dimensions through the survey for the final easement dimensions.
All right, I'll go ahead and open a public hearing. Does anybody here wish to speak in favor or against the abandonment of a portion of Kane Street? Closing the public hearing. Commissioners?
I move that we present AS 2022-005 to the Board for approval of the abandonment as presented.
Discussion. My only concern on this, and I actually drove this today just to see what we're dealing with, is traffic count. I know we haven't done any traffic studies. I understand that Harleton is going to acquire the property on either side of it. However, the only avenue to get through here if we do this one, for us to get to North Kane, a lot of the North Neblet stuff, is going to be all of that traffic pouring out onto Ollie. The school would have the, the north end of Ollie Street landlocked where that is the only avenue to get up there within the north edge of the school. Didn't see, I know Ollie's been improved lately, however, I'm not comfortable with pushing all of that traffic onto Ollie when we don't even know how much traffic it is.
I kind of agree too, because it's also going right into the heart of the campus where, right now, it is an open city street. And I'm just worried that once it is locked, that more buildings or structures might impede any traffic flow also.
In general, I'm usually against abandoning any streets, and this could cause some traffic difficulties, so I'd be in favor of this one advancing as well.
I'm, I'm not sure. This is the one that runs beside the parking lot. There's already a parking lot there. This isn't beside the, this isn't beside the apartments, correct?
Right.
This is, like, you would still be able to go to that stop sign on Vanderbilt at Vanderbilt and Neblet.
At Vanderbilt and what, Mary?
At Vanderbilt and Neblet. So, we're talking about the Section 5, correct?
Yes.
Yes. And if we've already closed off, or we've already said, let's abandon Section 4, you're essentially just feeding into the university with this section. I understand what you're saying in regard, especially in regards to Section 6.
Yes.
But I think Section 5, you're really just feeding into the university.
Valid point.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, ready to vote? We'll do a roll call on this one. Let's see, the motion stands to recommend to council to recommend abandonment as presented. Let's start on the end. If you wish to proceed with the abandonment, it's a yea, and then Justin's going to be a nay. Mary?
I'm a yea.
I'm a yea.
No.
No?
Yes.
Yes, and?
Yes.
Yes. One, two, three, four, one, two, three, four, five yeses, two nos. So, this goes forward to council with a positive recommendation. Case number AS 2023-006, abandonment of a portion of Vanderbilt Street from North Kane Street to North Neblet Street of the College Heights subdivision of the City of Steenville.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Public Works Department indicated that we would need to retain a 15-foot wide municipal easement for an 8-inch water line to keep the system looped, abandon a 6-inch sanitary sewer line, and get the dimensions of the easement through survey. No further comments.
Go ahead and open a public hearing. Anybody here wish to speak in favor or against this abandonment? Closing the public hearing. Commissioners?
I move that we do not approve this for abandonment. Okay.
Discussion. I think we got off on our numbers. This is the Neblet Street portion. This is 07, correct? Whenever we were just talking about it, Mary?
This is?
We are on number 6.
So, number 6 is actually?
Vanderbilt from North Kane to North Neblet.
Seven, yeah.
We're on number, yeah.
Six is actually street number 5, as shown on our exhibit.
Okay, so we're on dash 006.
Yes, ma'am.
Which would be street 5, is that correct?
Oh, in the, in the big, yes. Yes, street 5 on our purple.
Neblet from Jones Street to Vanderbilt Street?
Yeah.
We are discussing the section of Neblet from Jones to Vanderbilt currently.
No.
No?
We're discussing?
Vanderbilt from North Kane to North Neblet. Vanderbilt.
It would be east and west direction.
Oh, then we, oh.
Number 5.
Oh, then.
So, we've recommended approval of number 4 now, so 5 would be pointless.
So.
Pointless to hold on to.
But, but, is there a way to correct that?
I think we just, we've already got a motion and a second, so we just have to vote it down. Right, your motion?
I mean, I, I was under the impression with the, with the last motion that we were discussing Section 5, the section of Vanderbilt that we're now discussing.
Okay, so you were, you were mixed up into what we were.
But in that case, we've already?
We've already voted, and so that's a done deal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, now we're on case number?
But I think there were a number of us who, who had that misunderstanding. So, could we revisit that motion?
We can't, because that's already been voted on.
Already took action on it.
Yeah.
So, we're on case 7?
Case 7, so that's what we need.
We're on case 6.
Number 7, case AS 2023-006, Vanderbilt Street from North Kane to North Neblet.
Seven on the agenda, 006 as the item number.
And street number 5 on the map.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
We're good, we're good.
Okay, so, so what currently stands is a motion to not recommend to council, to recommend to council to not abandon this street. Are we, are we ready to vote on this? Well, we have to vote because we've had a motion and a second. Okay, so, so let's go ahead and vote. So, we're going to go down the line again. So, the, the recommendation is, it's to not recommend. So, if you wish to not recommend, it's an aye.
So, this is, this is 5 on the?
This is 5 on the purple map.
006 on the item, 7 on the agenda.
Okay, so, so where do you stand? Nay? So, okay, Justin?
Aye to say no.
But the, the motion is to not recommend, so you're a yea. And then, Mary?
I'm going to stand with my buddy Justin.
You're going to be a yea, okay. I'm going to be a no.
I'm going to be a yea.
You're going to be a yea?
No.
Nixon out, and?
Yea.
And you're a yea, okay. One, two, three, four, one, two, three, four. We've got four versus three, right? One, two, three, four versus three. So, that goes forward to council with a recommendation that we do not abandon that street. Okay. Next up, case number AS 2023-007, abandonment of portion of Neblet Street from West Jones Street to West Vanderbilt Street of the College Heights subdivision of the City of Steenville. Steve?
All right. So, Public Works comments, retain 15-foot municipal, or 15-foot wide municipal utility easement for a 2-inch water line to keep the system looped, abandon a 6-inch sanitary sewer line, and then obtain the dimensions for the, for the final easement to be identified by the survey.
Okay, I'll go ahead and open a public hearing. Anybody here wish to speak in favor or against this abandonment? Close the public hearing. Commissioners?
I recommend, I move that we recommend denial of the street abandonment.
Second.
Okay. So, this is Neblet from Jones. So, we're looking at number 6 on the map.
Yes, ma'am.
North, south Neblet.
All right, does anybody wish to discuss? You just want to get right to the vote.
Okay. I would just say, in, in addition to the previous comments, that, that apartment complex has been sold by Harleton before, and then repurchased and sold. I mean, if it was for sure going to stay in Harleton's hands, it would make, it might make sense, but it still is a very, it's a good point that you make about the traffic flow, and I think we would really be tying our hands by abandoning that portion.
Okay, so, the motion stands to recommend to council to not abandon this street. We're going to do a roll call vote. So, if you, so, so it's yea if you want to agree to not abandoning.
Yes.
Okay. So, you're, you're a yea?
I apologize, just to re-clarify, to say no to this one, it's?
I think you want to say yes to this one, because the motion is to not abandon.
Yes.
Yes.
There you go.
Mary?
Yes.
Yes. I'm going to say no?
Yes.
Ryan's yes?
No.
Yes.
And yes. So, the, the yays have it, so that goes forward to council with a recommendation to not abandon this street. All right, case number R 02023-008, applicant Kimberly Hammond is requesting a rezone for property located at 252 East Harleton, being parcel R 29602, acres 0.227, S 2600, City Edition Block 63, Lot 22, of the City of Steenville, Eroth County, Texas, from B 1 Neighborhood Business to B 3 Central Business District. Mr. Kellen?
Thank you, ma'am. Current zoning is B 1, future land use is B 3, that's what she's requesting. The current thought is that they could rezone this and use the property for possibly a bed and breakfast, or even a single-family home, which is a permitted use in B 3. Might want to point out to you that the Hammonds own the property directly north and the property directly east, or I'm sorry, directly west of 252, the property that we're taking in consideration tonight. And I believe they, Mr. and Mrs. Hammonds, they're here and are able to answer any questions that you may have related to their future plans. With that, Madam Chair, we'd be glad to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Steve?
What is the, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I can't remember. Is this a historical marker or not?
No.
Nope. Okay.
And it is just the dinner belt?
Well, let's, yeah.
I was just wondering the purpose of it. Does the?
We'll, we'll call up.
That'll work.
All right, questions for Steve? Okay, would the owners like to come up to the microphone and tell us whatever their plans are? If you could state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
My name's Kim Hammond, and my address, I have a P.O. box, and then my street, my home is 14565 FM 2481 in Steenville, or Steenville, the county. We are looking at flexibility for this building. We're the honored, my husband and I are the honored custodians of this legacy property. I think most of you are familiar with what this one looks like. It's been so many things, but we are looking at a way to continue. We've done some recent revisions, repaired or replaced windows, paint, roofing, and we're looking at a way to have a viable, way to make money in order to maintain this building in the future. So, that's where we were looking at the flexibility of the B 3. There's a house just two block, or a block down, actually, two doors down, that's a B and B, and they do really well, and we would like to see about doing the same thing, is what we'd like to do. We are part of the downtown Main Street designation. We have little dotted line around our property because of the historic nature of those buildings. They kind of did a carve-out, and we are part of that. We're just a block down from the walking trail, and we are part of, and want to continue to be part of, the downtown Main Street walking district. Your question to us is, or is, why would you want to go from B 1 to B 3? And that is for the flexibility. So, we have some ideas I'm really excited about. One of them with the B and B is that we would be able to honor one of the original people that lived in that house or owned the house, and that was Dr. James Beach. He was that house or owned the house, and that was Dr. James Beach. He was a settler here in the early 1870s and quite a character that did a lot in our community. He was an entrepreneur and an inventor. He had a mill, a gin, excuse me, and I think he's relocated his gin later on, but we would like to honor him. We've traveled, like a lot of you have, probably stayed in some B and Bs. Fredericksburg has a B and B that looks a lot like ours. It's just right across the corner from the Nimitz Museum. We love it. It looks like, it's called the Evers, Evers House with a German twist on it, H A U S. And we would like for our house to be known as the Captain G, excuse me, the Captain James Beach House, and have the whole story of that early entrepreneur. I've done some history or some researching with Cindy Shipman at the Historic Society, and she says he's her favorite individual of all the people that she's studied, which I don't know if y'all know her, but she's spent a huge amount of time studying the history of the Eroth County, and she loves him best. And we're honored to own that property, and we want to continue. There are so many people that want to see the inside of that, and we just feel like it will probably do really well with such an opportunity as that.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, were there any questions that weren't answered? All right, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right, I'll go ahead and open a public hearing. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak in favor or against this rezone request? I will close the public hearing. Commissioners?
I move that we approve the rezone request.
Recommend to council?
Second.
Recommend.
Discussion. All those in favor of recommending to council approval of this rezone request, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, so your next stop is city council, where they will make the final decision. Thank you for coming tonight. Next up, case number PP 2023-004, applicant Reagan Thompson, representing TSU Catholic LLC, is requesting a preliminary plat of properties located at 1292 West Washington, parcel R 77944, being block 134, lots 1218, 30B, 31, PTS OF of the City Edition, 1334 West Washington, parcel R 30249, being block 134, lot 40, ATM machine of the City Edition, 1350 West Washington, parcel R 30251, being block 134, lots 1528 of the City Edition, 1303 McNeil, parcel R 30272, being block 134, lot 32 of the City Edition, 1345 McNeil, parcel R 30271, being block 134, lot 31, S 150 of the City Edition, and 1353 McNeil, parcel R 30270, being block 134, lot 30A of the City Edition to the city of Steenville, Eroth County, Texas.
Good job.
Commissioners, you likely recall the P D. that Mr. Thompson brought forward for this project, the front porch. Been several months now, and he is wrapping up the civil review and ready to get started on this project. He is also looking at the plat, so I believe there's some type of business arrangement that he's needing the plat so he can move forward with some things with the bank, et cetera. But the case, we did mention it as a preliminary plat. City ordinance allows us to move straight to a final plat and be able to act on a final plat. If we work through the ordinance requirements related to the public improvements and the escrow agreement related to that. So basically, we are asking that we consider this for a final plat. Final plat will basically just be acted on with these conditions, and then it will just sit dormant, live dormant until either Mr. Thompson and his project wrap up the public improvements and they're accepted by city staff, or he enters into an escrow agreement with the city that provides the city with escrow funds of 110% of the total public improvements for that project. That would allow him to get a building permit and move forward with the project, even though the public improvements have not been completed. That would also allow him to move forward with the recording of the final plat with the county. So there are mechanisms here that allow us to not only move forward with the final plat, but allow the developer to either build the improvements as a project progresses or delay those improvements with escrow funds. I don't know if I made that very clear or not, but wanted to kind of walk you through the options. So staff's recommending that the commission consider approval of the final plat with the following conditions, obtain acceptance of the public improvements, or, and that's through the completion of the public improvements, or per chapter 155, section 5-05 of the Code of Ordinances, enter into an escrow agreement for the completion of the public improvements. I indicated title as final plat. That's been taken care of, so item two would not apply. Item three, provide setbacks on each lot as approved with the plan development. If you look at the submittal, on the east side, there's a setback that's not referenced on the plat, and we discussed that today with Mr. Reese Flanagan, and that correction's going to be made. So with that, Madam Chair, I'd be glad to answer any questions related to this case. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Steve?
Steve, have we, are we aware at all, and you know I'm the utility guy, are we aware at all of any existing utilities within the abandoned portion, the abandonment of the utility easements? Calls out abandoned easement, utility easement abandoned per this plat, but we don't know if there's anything in there. That's why I hate these, without having an Ulta survey on them.
So the civil plan set's been submitted through two public works. We've gone through all of those reviews. Public Works has actually worked with the developer on securing easements for shared access between this property and Cold Stone.
Fairfoot?
Cold Smoke.
Cold Smoke, yes.
Was there every day?
You're thinking ice cream.
Was there every day.
It was one of them.
So I know we've been working with the developer on all of those easements, and I fully believe that if there was anything related to a public utility, we would identify that and...
And my concern came from the fiber-end utility easement. So we could have an Atmos line, we could have a AT&amp;T or CenturyLink line through there in Steenville. I assume it's been abandoned with the demolishing, but...
No easements, no utilities cutting through there, but with the fiber optic that was there before, and when Mr. Thompson acquired the property, he entered into negotiations with the telecommunications company, and this is what they have agreed to as far as allowing them continued access to that communications tower.
Thank you, sir.
Great question. Yes, sir.
Is that what the red dotted lines are?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I was confused about that.
They've actually given us two plats to review, same plat, but the first is to show the actual easements and the agreements that have been negotiated with the telecommunications company, the one on the left, and then the one on the right is just to show you the full plat and how that will look once it's recorded, with the exception of that one setback that we have to have added to the east side of the plat.
Okay.
All right, any further questions for Steve? All right, I'll go ahead and open a public hearing. Is anybody here wish to speak in favor or against this plat request? Closing the public hearing, commissioners?
Move that we approve PP 2023-004.
Second.
Final, final plat and with conditions?
Yes, with the conditions.
And final?
And final.
So you're, Brian, and who is the second? Okay. All those in favor of approving the final plat for PP 2023-004, as noted with conditions, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Last and finally, case number SV 2023-003, applicant Niraj Patel, representing DNJ's Investment LLC, is requesting an appeal for a subdivision waiver denial regarding section 155.6.11 sidewalk requirements to be constructed at 3015 Northwest Loop, parcel R 63719, acres 2.730, S 2600, City Edition, block 161, lot 1, of the city of Steenville, Eroth County, Texas. Steve?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Staff's asking that the commission deny the appeal based on these requirements set forth by the subdivision ordinance. On October 9, 2023, Mr. Patel, representing DNJ Investment LLC, submitted minor subdivision waiver request for both sidewalk and curb and gutter for his project on the Northwest Loop, which will, as you know, be the Senator Robert J. Glasgow loop in the future. The curb and gutter waiver was approved, but the sidewalk was denied. Now, this project is for a hotel, and it's going to be along the Northwest Loop, and the thought is that there may be patrons that want to walk to restaurants there along Washington, and as the school district completes the stadium project, sidewalks are going to become more and more important in that area, according to staff and the opinions of the staff. So we would recommend denial. Mr. Patel was, he objected to the denial and had the due process to appeal to the city manager, and chapter 155 allows the appeal to go to the city manager's office, which is then channeled to the Planning and Zoning Commission for review. You will make a recommendation tonight, and that will go to city council for final action. With that, be glad to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for Steve? All right, are the owners here tonight?
I do not see Mr. Patel.
Okay.
I did have a quick... Do we have, were sidewalks not required for the car dealership when they did their updates? Was that not in place already?
I believe that was before the subdivision ordinance was even in place.
Okay.
So, and once a building is in existence, even if they do updates to it, it's not necessarily going to trigger compliance with the subdivision ordinance because it was an existing building.
Okay. All right, I'll go ahead and open a public hearing. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak in favor or against this sidewalk request? Closing the public hearing, commissioners?
I move that we recommend to council denial of SV 2023-003. As recommended by staff.
Discussion?
Well, we need a second.
Oh, second, sorry.
Are we going to?
I jumped the gun.
I'll give you your second.
All right.
I guess I'm just curious on to, I don't see a lot of sidewalks without curb and gutter, and I know that we expect Tech Dot to eventually widen and install curb and gutter, at which times they will. Most projects I've seen now with Tech Dot, and that's a lot, and I can't compare it exactly to this, they install shared use paths as basically part of their M.O. at any given point. The reason I say that is I fear that we force him to have a sidewalk without a curb and gutter, so it'll just have, you know, basically slope up from the ditch to a sidewalk that's floating and then into the property. That Tech Dot, whenever they do improve this, they're going to install, I feel like they would, because they basically require sidewalks as part of any of their projects now.
Well, the sidewalk would be retained on their property, though. It wouldn't be on the right of way.
Correct, so we'd have a double sidewalk.
And then also, up the road from there at the bank, they were required to put in the same sidewalks as well.
Along Fry Street?
No, further up by Forest.
Back on up by Forest Lane.
And all of that, and that stretch of land between the bank and McCoy's is all zone commercial. So especially with the development that's been approved, the residential development that's been moved off of Forest, the potential for foot traffic through there is going to be...
And that will also be new construction within the last year.
In addition to that.
And there is, I just, the point in his letter that made sense to me is you're going to have a 150-foot of sidewalk running into nothing back down into the ditch on either side of them. So I just didn't see the point in pushing him on the sidewalk.
And with the bank, both sides of it were developed.
Yes.
Correct.
So any development that comes in with the bank...
Will have to.
Will have to put in a sidewalk, so.
This is effectively...
In terms of how the sidewalks are finished, is, do they have to be finished so that they feed into adjoining properties, or can he like curve those into his own?
It's from property line to property line. So as those projects come in and develop, then each parcel will have to, each development will have to extend the sidewalk, the entire frontage.
To tie into.
Yes, ma'am.
I was just thinking, that might be something beneficial, like if he just makes it a loop around his property.
Right. But, no, that's what, and I don't see Brunner selling any property soon unless that dramatically increases, and McCoy's is basically established, so it would be numerous years before we...
You mean the Ford dealer?
Or, yeah, Tech Star, yeah.
All right, we ready to vote? Justin, I'd like you to...
Just in general, I've always been against business owners or homeowners, you know, being forced to put in a sidewalk if they don't want to. So I just believe philosophically we shouldn't be forcing them to do it.
Okay, the recommendation stands to deny to council, or to recommend to council denial of this waiver request. We're going to go ahead and do a roll call vote because this seems like a hot topic. All right, starting on the end.
Can I start on that side?
I'm going to say yes, deny.
Yes, deny. Justin?
No.
No. Mary?
Yes.
I'm a yes.
I'm going to change to a no.
Ryan's a no. Nick?
No.
No, and?
No.
No. Okay, so we've got one, two, three, four noes versus three yeses. By a slim margin, the recommendation goes forth to council to not deny this waiver request.
To not deny.
All right, well, so ends the December meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. We will reconvene next year, ladies and gentlemen.
I move to adjourn.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. Thank you.